Good evening and welcome to the December tenth, two thousand and twenty four, meeting of the Islam Motto Town Council. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we stand for the public allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask that we take a moment of silence to reflect on all of the events going on, both here and abroad. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being recorded by Elcat, and I would ask if there's anyone else in the audience recording, if you could identify yourself.
Sarah Heenan in Reminder.
Great, thank you. Comments, is there anyone in public that would like to make the comment? No one online, Jamie? Okay. Counsel comments, any counselor with a comment tonight? I see none, town manager's report. Hi, Tom.
Hey, good evening. So just our meeting update, I've attached the project reports for November eighteenth and or the weeks of November eighteenth and twenty fifth at the high school. Still, Fontaine Brothers continues to make excellent progress and the project remains on time and budget. There is a school building committee meeting Thursday. And yeah, so things are looking good over at the high school. So we had our ratings call on November twentieth, and the town has retained its double A plus stable rating. S and P reports are attached to this, thanks to Kim and Dawn and Olga and Stephanie for all the work in preparing for the ratings call, there's a lot of prep. The questions come over, we have to gather a bunch of them, said we, they put a bunch of stuff together. I'm also there, Rebecca was there. And and they just, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to to provide that information and keep that rating, so. Thanks to basically everybody in the finance department. And a special thanks to Abby Jeffers of Hilltop Securities for for sort of helping us through that whole process. We did receive bids for the ban and the bond, we banned, that's a bond anticipation note, four million, six hundred and sixty five, four million, six hundred and sixty five thousand, two forty six, and the bond of ninety four million, eight hundred and ninety five thousand, which was well over half of the money for the the high school. I've attached those results along with a lot of other documents, we can talk about in a second. But the the ban results show a winning bid coupon rate of four percent and the net interest cost of two point six nine percent. And that's due to the premium of sixty thousand, nine twenty eight. The bond results fairly similar coupon rate, four point zero two two, four one four percent, and then that interest cost of three point seven. Basically, the difference between the the coupon rate and the net interest cost is where we stand as a community, so so our financial policies, our financial standing, our bond rating, that gives us the extra points on what the bid number would have come in at. So again, there's a lot to explain in all that data, and I gave all you the data, but if you'd like to have our bond counsel in or have like a more elaborate presentation of the results and what they mean, we're more than happy to do that at a later meeting. The Cliff's Notes are fabulous, obviously. We estimated a five percent when we were talking about the high school and the impact to its residents, to our residents. And to come in at four percent and and sort of look at it at three point seven because of our rating and all this stuff, we haven't even bonded all the money yet, and we've, this is equivalent to saving twenty five million dollars, which is obviously, it's, I don't, yeah, there, there's no words for for how huge that is. So again, I said thanks to the finance committee, but really, everybody that's had anything to do with the town's finances in the last, say, decade has put us to this point where, you know, we went out a little bit earlier than we thought, it paid off to the tune of something like twenty five million, so. And again, we have some more money to borrow as the cash flow happens with the project, but that is no small number, and you know, a lot of people, there's a lot of people to thank for that. But it's certainly wonderful news for the community and the project, so. Again, if you if you want more information on all that forty pages of ban and bond information, I'd be happy to to elaborate, but that that's the Cliff's Notes. We also were awarded for almost forty eight thousand dollar municipal ADA planning grant from the Mass Office on Disability. The the grant funding here will benefit the town undertaking a multidisciplinary review and assessment of our buildings, outdoor spaces, and online information resources for ADA compliance. So another exciting grant opportunity for us that we'll we'll get working on here soon. In other remarkable news, Mass DOT just notified us that Phase Two of the North Main Street Reconstruction Project has been approved and deemed eligible for funding. So this is Phase Two will be, Phase One is from Lombard to La Salle Street, right out, right outside here, and this Phase Two will be from La Salle all the way to Brook Street across Westwood and Maple Shade, including that intersection. So that that project carries a price price tag of about fifteen million dollars. We put aside the six hundred thousand, I think, last year in capital to design it, which is the the first requirement of the community to get on the tip is to put the design money up, which we've done, so between the whatever six hundred we did for Phase One and Phase Two, we're going to get about somewhere between twenty five and thirty million dollars worth of infrastructure and construction from Lombard all the way down to Brook. So that's exciting, again, there's a timeline here, we've been talking about this Phase One tip for for three years now, and we're still two years out, and this will be another four or five, depending on how the money plays out. But again, to to put up a half a million bucks and get a fifteen million dollar project is, I mean, that's really what it's all about, so. Great job by DPW again. So that's, that's very exciting. And then, so we have upcoming events, Center Town District Steering Committee meeting this Thursday at six P M. right here in the COA. We'll have a planning board meeting Tuesday, January seventh at the COA, and I only bring that up as the the ADU public hearing was continued to that date. And coffee with the town manager Wednesday, January eighth at ten thirty at the COA. Come out and say hi, there's no meeting on the first Wednesday because that's New Year's Day, so we've moved it to the eighth. We we had, I think, over a dozen people for the first time ever, so it's getting real popular. So get your tickets early. In all seriousness, you know, this is our last meeting of the year, so I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year and looking forward to calendar year twenty five. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Tom?
Ralph's not here.
He got me in the, he got me at Tony's Barber Shop on Saturday.
I would just say, just echoing those comments, it's a lot of positive news in this update, especially with the the bonding and the band stuff, I remember about a year ago, we were talking about interest rates and we were, things were going to be five or six percent that we were going to be paying, so that's quite a significant reduction, which is good. All right. It is before public hearings, so I would entertain a motion to order.
So moved.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Move to orders of the day, licensing matters, the first one, we have approval of a one day liquor license for one way brewing for a holiday prelude at Hawks Landing.
How's everybody doing today?
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Thanks for having me in. Evening, sir. My name is Jason Tizzo, and I am here representing One Way Brewing tonight for a one day liquor permit for an event being held at eight ninety six Summers Road, the old Forbes Garden Mart, now the new Hawks Landing, hope you guys like it. And yeah, so the event's going to be held from twelve to four. We're hoping to be able to bring some beer and some libations to the site and serve them to the public along with the other events going on that day.
Right, does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. I know there, the plans are underway, you're advertising twelve to five, is that correct?
Twelve to five, yes.
It's winter. What's happening on the property so that where where are where are these people going to, what are you doing?
What are we doing? Did I switch seats and go to my Hawks landing? Yeah, so so our event, we're hoping, what we're looking to do, it really is kind of like a holiday prelude, so we're going to do crafts. We're going to have Santa there, we're going to have, you know, smores for kids, we're going to have some vendors and kind of just introduce people to the property and kind of what, you know, a little idea of what we're going to do, we're still working on our our full plans for the property and, you know, the building and everything that we're going to put on, so. That will soon be to the planning board, but we just don't want to be premature on that, we want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row before we kind of launch that, but this is kind of like just a something that we hope to be the first of many, and you know, my my family's been going to the holiday prelude up in Kenny Bunkport for years, and it's like one of the best events at Christmas time, so we're hoping maybe we can start this year and kind of keep growing it where we can get all the town involved and, you know, do something pretty cool, you know, so. I don't, I don't know if that'll happen, but you know, that's our, that's our wishlist, you know, we have a whole bunch for that place. So it's kind of, yeah, so this is the the first first go at it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hey, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve a one day liquor license for one way brewing for holiday prelude at Hawks Landing, eight ninety six Summers Road on December twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, from twelve to five P M.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. I'll see you before we end on the twenty second, have a nice holiday.
Thank you.
You as well. We will see everybody there.
Still have time, so next under licensing matters is the approval of two thousand and twenty five annual license renewals for two six A. So any questions? There's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I think it was. They're going to get mad at me, but Sugar Bowl is the only one on here with a restaurant all alcohol, and it's a thousand versus twenty two hundred, is that right? Shaker Bowl?
One. Page two.
I don't know, I had it out of order. I spaced it in.
I think it's page two.
They should, yeah.
Maybe page three.
Yeah, it should be. Yeah.
Good catch.
Thanks. Probably going to get you.
It's on the third page, Jeannie.
Oh, I see, I didn't update the quantity, the amount, right, thank you.
Oh, I see, there it is.
I have similar to that question, if I can.
Sure.
And it is on tray olive. I what page is that, I can't even find it myself.
That's the last page, the second line.
I naively thought it is that business was a specialty shop for fine olive oils and stuff.
They do wine baskets and online oils.
Okay, so be, thank you. Enough said. Package store, I don't think.
Haven't been to that one yet.
Category it's under, but they do the wine baskets, yeah, with the olive oil and very fine. Yeah, they do.
Any other questions?
Just want to make a comment that the collector went through this whole list to make sure everybody was up to date with any kind of taxes or fines. There are only two this year, which is pretty good. So I've already contacted those licensees telling them they have to pay their taxes before they get their licenses, so.
Great. That extends us their emotion.
I make a motion to approve the renewal of the two thousand and twenty five annual license bills contingent upon each licensee's compliance with all town departments.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Now it's six sixteen, if someone would like to make a motion to return to public here, well, actually, the first one will be very quick since we're just continuing, so I if it's the pleasure, we can continue down the
Right.
agenda, and then at six thirty, we can return.
That makes a good idea, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we will move to financial matters, the first item is
We didn't do discussion.
Oh, sorry, thank you. We have discussion of two hundred Shaker Road, thank you for So last month, somewhere towards the middle end of November, we were alerted that there was a issue at two hundred Shaker Road, which is the same sort of property that Beauty Time Salon and Nail Spa currently operates at, and that both the Islam Motto Police and Fire Departments were dispatched around nine P M. For a report of someone who had fallen and was unconscious upon them responding and that that person was intoxicated, and there was a different person in there navigating the property that was also intoxicated. As a result of all of that, they found that this wasn't something that was just happening in the front half of the nail salon, there was kind of this other entrance at some port down the building with a different door, and there was tables set up in a banquet event sort of facility, and there was like a DJ booth and stage among other things there. So at that point, that kind of prompted the council, being the local licensing authority, to investigate and take some action on that, since that's not a licensed venue for serving alcohol. So on December fourth, I sent a letter to the owner of that business, which even it's seen in your packet with the corresponding pictures. We also have the both call log and the incident report and stuff from the fire and police departments. And then in concurrence with that, both the fire department and the building department also issued letters to stop essentially, yeah, cease and desist, thank you. So that's kind of where we are tonight. I don't necessarily know that there's anything above and beyond for the council to take, just so much as informing everyone of what happened and what could potentially happen in the future if that sort of thing continues on. There was some discussion about licensing, especially around like BYOB and that sort of thing. But as far as I understand it, and certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, it seems like that sort of BYOB policy wouldn't apply in this situation in that it's different if someone was bringing their own alcohol to in concurrence with getting served. You know, paying for a service or a product or something at the business, and they were consuming it themselves with that, but since this was unrelated to the the operation of the licensed business there, it wasn't really a a properly licensed adventure.
And if I can add to that, part of the one of the officer, responding officers stated that there was in S excess of eighty individuals on the property at the time, and it was quite a party going on and where the several people inebriated to the point of being ill. And that when, of course, when you see police respond, everybody started to scatter, and the folks that they were able to interview to get statements from, there was no consistency in the statements, everybody had a different take on it. Interestingly enough, today we learned that they have a website and they openly advertise BYOB and the capacity to have large crowds with DJs and dancing and you can have your catered food brought in and other alcohol. I would like to think that that falls now under the cease and desist order. I don't know what authority we might have to tell the owner of that establishment that that that's, you really should look differently at your website because you can't do that anymore without a liquor license and the the one day liquor license, and it's exclusively, if they were to apply for one, exclusively for an event held in the salon. It can never be attached to what the police and fire chief is saying is that what is going on there is an illegal use of a building in a a building, a business zone, it's permitted exclusively for storage. They can't use it as a place of assembly, and nor would they either chief approve it, so. I would agree with how your letter states that if you wish to have an event, you need to take out a one day liquor license. As to how we go forward with policing it, literally policing it to make sure that, apparently, these things happen on Sunday nights, the owner was on the property and admits that he has, you know, a lot of friends and they like to get together on Sunday nights, and there's karaoke, and the pictures substantiate that, a very elaborate stage and elaborate lighting structure, there are no small amount of money has gone into making this a party venue, if, those are my words. And you can even see tables with a whole lot of alcohol on them, so it's slightly more than BYOB. I don't know how how we should proceed, should we be asking as a council that, you know, we can handle the license piece, but we don't want to revisit another incident where a patron is unconscious all the way to the hospital, he he came to while when they were arriving, and another one wandering on the tree belt inebriated. How's everybody, I guess I'd like to hear what anyone else's thoughts are on should we ask the chiefs to follow through and and have the owner dismantle that? It's strictly for storage, it used to be the old Taylor rental property, so that warehouse bin was obviously for the equipment that was available to rent, but was never intended to be a
I think that's the minimum
Party venue.
should do. I think that's the minimum of what we should do. Right, and just in my opinion, I mean, I think this is a pretty clear kind of flagrant violation of the use of that property, and it kind of seems outrageous and sort of a you know, thumb in the nose of households basically holding like these, I mean, this is, this isn't like a couple of people coming together drinks in the, you know, the back of the store or something and hanging out, I mean, this looks like this has been going on for a while, and this wasn't the first time. And, you know, I'm I'm just glad nobody got, you know, accidentally killed.
And see, there, to me, there is that danger of BYOB, that who's on the hook when somebody, the gentleman weaving on the curb could have been hit by a car, then who's on the hook for that?
Yeah, sometime, I mean, we have lights, you know, streetlights, but you know, you're at night, you you know, you know, you could be driving, I've driven there, I'm sure everybody on this council's driven Shaker Road at night like that, like, you don't know, I mean, somebody could just move right into the middle of the road, so I don't know, I I would, I think we need to follow up on this and and really look at this business pretty hard.
I had a quick question. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Um, where are they advertising? What website, the Beauty Times website?
Yes, on their nail salon site.
And is it attached to the building, like behind the Beauty Times or?
They're they're the storefront in front of it, think of like
Yeah, yeah, it's one big
But a door leads to this, what would have been Taylor Rental Store Room.
Got it.
Storage room. Apparently, the owner of the business, Mr. Chuang, states that the owner of the building is aware of those events and allegedly, that's why I'm saying allegedly, has no issue with it. Whether or not that's true or not, I think that gentleman needs to be notified too that you know, you're the owner of the building, something horrible goes wrong there, you might also be liable for whatever the case could be, just to me, it's an accident waiting to happen, I think we need to do a little more than just acknowledge that we've sent letters.
When I looked at the photo, all I could think of is, it's a club. Now there, it's it's set up like a club.
Like it, yeah.
And, you know, I'm not against clubs, but it needs the illegal use. Can we bring them in, do we want to bring them in? To talk, I mean, to make sure that they know that we're serious?
Pure chaplain, owner of the building. I have spoken with the tenant when we got the notification. Yes, I knew there were events going on, the magnitude that they grew to didn't know of. I've spoken with him and with the cease and desist, my understanding, he's planning on shutting down, that's it, no more. Nothing at all, he's like, I'm done. I think it got out of control, even on his end beyond. So it's my understanding, I've spoken with the fire inspector that came and stuff, and that he's he's saying no more, I'm not, I'm not doing it again.
Would, are you you willing to follow through on with with the owner of the business, say, in a few weeks to in fact, make sure that he's done that?
Oh, absolutely, I I talk with them frequently, so.
We'll continue to monitor it as well.
Okay.
It's outside too.
That's fair, as long as you're, you know, on top of it.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
I found out about it from Paul, the chief called me, and I went to our camera system and said, okay, didn't know this was this big. You know, they they do a lot, they're Vietnamese community, they are if they have an event, it's the cousin, the brother.
Of course.
And but as I said, it's, I think it's gotten out of hand, and even he realizes that it's he doesn't want the liability.
Right, right, it can get dangerous.
Yeah, because I know they had other events that they were planning on doing, that they've already moved them to other venues, so they're pretty much my, the impression I'm getting is he's saying, I'm, I'm not doing it here.
Well, thank you for your follow up on.
Thank you, no, no problem.
Then I'm satisfied.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're at six twenty nine, so we could entertain a motion to move back to public here. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. We're back to public hearings, our first one was scheduled for six fifteen P M., this was continuing a public hearing for proposed zoning bylaw amendments for ground mounted, total vault take. This was solely because at our last meeting, we had technically opened the public hearing and continued it to this meeting, but given that the Planning Matters Subcommittee is still reviewing the solar bylaw amendments that this time is ready to undertake that, so it's still a public hearing, so I'll open it for public comment at this point, but then we will simply just continue it to a future meeting for further discussion. So council meeting members for this hearing from left to right are Jim, Kathy, Anna, myself, Marilyn, and John. Jim, Kathy, Anna, myself, Marilyn and John. And if Jeanie could read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on December ten, twenty twenty four at six fifteen P M in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty eight North Main Street for the purpose of addressing proposed amendments to the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw Article ten ground mounted photovoltaic installations. This is a continuation of the public hearing held on November twelve, twenty twenty four. These amendments would add the definition of a parking canopy installation and add text to the definition of roof mounted installations. Add the exemption of small scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations from the site plan review requirement and remove medium and large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations from the area dimensional and density requirements. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar for the council. Jean, our Quaglety Town Clerk of the council.
Thank you, Jeanie. At this time, members of the public are welcome to their input or questions. If there's anyone that would like to speak. And I'll close the public input portion of the meeting. And councillor that would like to discuss motions and entertain a motion.
I just wanted, for the council's benefit, first of all, I was the chair. Anna's now the chair. Begrudgingly, I don't know. I stepped down because of a tough schedule. But was chair at the last meeting and we are dealing with different formats of the original document that you received. The the information doesn't really change. We just have to go through it all and figure out which is the best for the town or for the bylaws to to move forward with. So I'm not sure how quickly this will fall into place, but I wanted you to know that we're working on it. Anna's working on it.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Hey, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for ground mounted photovoltaic installation to January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five at six P M.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Say none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Hey, but we'll continue that to January twenty eighth. Second public hearing is for six thirty and it's now six thirty three. This hearing is for the proposed bylaw amendment for a bylaw review committee of Article nine, section three of the Charter for second reading. If you're here, the council members from left to right are Jim Laden, Ill, Anna Jones, myself, I'm Pache, Marilyn Richards, I'm Torture. So read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on December ten, twenty twenty four, six thirty P M in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty eight North Main Street for the purpose of a second reading of a proposed bylaw amendment for a bylaw review committee per Article nine, section three of the Charter. Public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar. Information relating to this bylaw is available for public inspection at the Town Clerk's Office sixty Center Square or an electronic version on the website. For the council, Jean, our Quaglety Town Clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you, Jeanie.
You're welcome.
Uh, so since I drafted it, I'll just provide the brief overview of this. So this was a bylaw that was created according to Article nine, section three of the Charter, which says that we have to establish a bylaw review committee in order to undertake the bylaw review that the Charter requires every ten years, starting in years ending on a five. So twenty twenty five is the first year that we have to undertake our first full ten year review of all the town's bylaws. So this bylaw review committee would establish the essentially the powers and duties, the membership, the appointment and term, et cetera. Given that, I would ask if there's anyone that would like to read the proposed bylaw into the
I can do that. Is it this one? Or is it three?
I think.
It's on three or four.
Yeah, I mean, the one that has the green and the red definitely, and you only have to read the the green part.
Okay.
We don't have to, we don't have to read this.
All right, chapter one seventy eight, bylaw review committee. Subsection one seven seven dash one, authority to establish a special bylaw review committee shall be established as mandated in Article nine, section three of the Town Charter. Subsection one seven seven dash two, when established, report. Town council shall establish the committee no later than July one on the year ending in a five. The committee shall submit a written report to the town council on or before March fifteenth of the following year. Subsection one seven seven dash three, powers and duties. The committee shall review and prepare proposed revision for recodification of the general bylaws of the town as described in Article nine, section three of the Charter. Subsection one seven seven dash four, membership. The committee shall be comprised of up to seven registered voters of the town with the following restrictions. A, no more than two members can be current town councillors. C, which probably would be B.
Yeah.
No more than two members can be employees of the town. And C, at least two members shall be residents who are not town councillors or town employees. Section one seven seven dash five, appointment of members' term. Town council president will appoint committee members under the authority described in Article two, section three of the Charter. Each appointment shall expire as of the end of the fiscal year in which the committee's report is submitted.
Great. Anna? At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment, provide input for this public hearing?
I I have a very small one. I think in the body of it, it should all be changed to one seventy eight dash whatever. Right, this is chapter one seventy eight.
Oh. Good call.
Catched.
Yeah.
How about that?
E code would have got it.
Connor, just a quick point. The letter references chapter one seventy seven. The top reference is one seventy eight and everything else is one seventy seven. So I'll make sure we have that actually put right.
Yeah, the one seventy seven is the Charter Review Committee, which exists. So I think that was a
Yes.
Probably a copy.
I think that was my typo. Yeah.
The one seventy eight is vacant.
Yes.
So that should probably be the
There's no one else in the public. I'll close the public import portion of this public hearing. And the council now has the opportunity to discuss or comments or questions.
Just say me, Jim and Ralph had a very productive meeting a few days ago. Just kind of tightened up a little bit of language, but it largely sort of reflected what you had originally put together. And, uh, and yeah, that's straight kind of to the point.
Great. Further questions or comments? Hey, say none. I'll entertain a motion to public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearings.
Motion's been made and seconded. They closed the public hearing. Is there further discussion? Say none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the proposed bylaw amendment or bylaw review committee per Article nine, section three of the Charter as presented, including the change of to one seventy eight.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Since this is a bylaw, we have to do a roll call vote. So Jim?
Aye.
Kathy?
I'll follow that. Aye.
Aye.
I am an aye. Marilyn?
Aye.
And John?
I am a yeah.
Great, the motion passes. You? Board of our six forty five public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to move to financial matters.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Say none. Some favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Me opposed. It will move to eight, one, financial matters. So our first topic is to reappropriate one hundred five thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and ninety nine cents in remaining ARPA funds for the tip project. Tom, would you like to?
ARPA, thought we were done. Uh, so this is simply a counting sort of cleanup. Uh, there was some money that was encumbered in one of the projects previously funded by ARPA that we moved the remaining monies out of already. Uh, so this is just a cleanup. There's no appropriation. There's no nothing. It's just calling this, that and this, that, and then ARPA can really be done. I swear, this is it. This is the last time.
Any other questions? Okay. There's questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, reappropriate one hundred and five thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and ninety nine cents remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds from account number five eight five five one four Transportation Improvement Program to the following projects. Lap at five eight five five one seven dash D P W truck number seventy three, fifty three thousand two hundred and forty four dollars and twenty cents. Item five eight five five one seven Municipal Light Plant, nine thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. Item three four two zero zero one six Patrol Vehicle Replacement, thirty four thousand two two dollars and ninety five cents. Item three four two two zero zero seven, D P W North Main Tip, Harkness slash Dearborn, eight thousand two hundred and eight dollars and eighty four cents for a total of one hundred and five thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and ninety nine cents and reappropriate free cash and interest from those projects to five eight five five one four tips.
There's second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still have time, so next, under financial matters, we have the approval of a creation special purpose stabilization fund to be named capital stabilization fund established under the Massachusetts General law, chapter forty, section five B. Kathy?
Thank you. Yes, I want to go back to our last meeting in November, the twenty sixth, when this matter came before the council and reiterate a statement that councillor Page made because he was, as I, as am I, part of the Financial Oversight Committee that was preparing the budget recommendations for the council. And in discussing the town's reserves and capacity to fund certain projects, it was apparent that as I'm sure every town is in this situation, there's never enough money to do all that needs to be done at any given time. What we talked about in the committee was that in addition to the annual capital improvement plan that can run anywhere from one to two million dollars, depending on the the town's capacity in any given fiscal year. We needed to come up with a mechanism that would have a funding reserve exclusively for buildings in town so that they didn't have to, when something went awry, that required a fair amount of money. They didn't have to compete with the capital improvement plan that is reviewed and proposed once a year and then approved by the council every May, the end of May. So that was, that that's the backstory to how the thing got on the agenda in November. And again, I will reiterate Mr. Page's remarks that the spirit of the conversation was around, we need a dedicated fund to focus strictly on buildings. I'm here tonight to echo that, that that's my recollection as well, being on the committee and that we have a a motion before shortly here to establish that fund. But the motion and the financial policy right now is in my mind, still a little too broad. It doesn't define the specific purpose that it should be related to buildings. And I would like to suggest that if the council has an agreement about that, then we simply modify the language and tighten it up before we go forward and and set this up in place. I'm certainly in favor of doing that. I I just think the the wording needs to be tightened up a little with, you know, a caveat in there about related just to buildings in town. There's sixteen of them and easily fourteen at some point are going to need the attention of the planners in the town.
Anyone have any?
I just, yeah, I remember being on the oversight committee earlier this year and remember some of those kind of conversations we're having because we've been obviously talking about buildings between, you know, moving town hall, obviously the high school. We're going to have, though, a lot of buildings that we're going to have to sort of put Band-Aids on because we can't replace every old building all at once. And and they still need to obviously perform, so and I agree, I think being able to maybe like tighten things up just a little bit so that we can take this very unique opportunity. I mean, it's not every day where we can create a stabilization fund and have be able to put immediately, you know, potentially a million dollars or so into it and then maybe more money in the in the preceding years, so or the future years. So I think that would be, I think, a smart move and spirit of kind of what we saw at that level, at the committee level.
I would just say for myself, being on the the town manager's capital planning committee that looks both at capital projects from like a building perspective, but just other all capital projects, I suppose, in the town. That we also had a similar recommendation to come up with one, but it was less focused on buildings and more just overall large ticket items. So I do think that there's still a need potentially for both. I do think that it probably makes more sense to preserve some of that for you know, building projects specifically, but I I don't necessarily like handcuffing ourselves just to building projects when they're scale capital items that could come up that we may have to take action on and this would be a place to do it. And I think overall, the council's still the appropriating authority, so we still have that control to you know, say, no, we don't want to do that if a project came before us that wasn't related to our building desires. But that's just my take on it. Does anyone have any other comments or questions?
I tend to agree with Connor in terms of not handcuffing ourselves. But at the same time, I think compared to what I think both of you have stated, a little more tightening up of the language from what I'm reading here. This leaves it open really to anything. So maybe a little more tightening, but with some remaining flexibility. How you do that, Tom, I don't.
That's funny. I was just going to ask for suggestions. No, I think, yeah, we can certainly sort of fashion the language however we deem necessary, right? This is why we had the conversation about what our needs look like and and I do agree that most of the large ticket items are, will be building related just because. That's not to say that I could come up with a bunch of scenarios right now that would not be building related that we we potentially could would have a large price tag. So I think if we look at it in terms of planning, we should pick one and or create both in terms of forecasting and planning for this amount of money and then picking a project off at the right time. If if that's the wish, then that that would be more helpful in terms of making a plan for the future.
No, I just, I'm looking here between stabilization funds and capital stabilization fund. It's my understanding that the stabilization fund is there basically for more catastrophic type of things. If we suddenly had a storm blow through and and take a school out or the town hall or something like that, that
Right.
that money would be available for that, which is a building. I mean, I I hear what Kathy's saying and I remember the discussion and I remember how important it is when we talked about three eighty two North Main Street and all of the issues with other buildings in town and we really needed to start somewhere. As a council, I guess, no matter what we say, if it arose, we could probably vote to use the money anyway if we needed it. But I understand But I understand making a statement about buildings and and the importance of trying to. Catch up to what's been left for a number of years. I think it would be a good thing to rewrite it so that it does at least emphasize that need.
Do you think that there's, and no, it's fine, and do you think that there's a need to say? Look at the capital planning language again, too? I mean, if we're we're sort of running these concurrent. Accounts for, you know, that doesn't. Disclose. Building projects from the capital plan, right? It's just the larger ones, though, is it a dollar value? Because building is still gonna be allowed in the capital plan. And then what's that threshold when we get to use the other pot of money? So now that we're having the conversation, I agree that the language could be such that. We can call that out if we want to. You know, the the overarching fact is to put this money into a fund that is sort of now a singular purpose where the stabilization fund is like. Yeah, oh crap.
Right, right.
This is more focused towards planning for the future and however we decide that is going to be. Sort of semantical. Now we're taking this money out of the short term pot. And putting it in the long term pot from an investment standpoint, so I think not that a month, waiting a a month is gonna make that much of a difference. But I think if we if if we want to say that it's just buildings or say that it's just something, then we can do that. And then deal with the capital plan on a yearly basis. Knowing full well that some of these larger projects on the capital plan will eventually. Run into the capital stabilization fund. Is that what we're sort of? That's what you're.
I like the suggestion of defining, you know, a threshold. Because just thinking back to this recent capital plan, there was something in there for the middle school to. Make some adjustments to the window sills and it only, no, I shouldn't say only, but it was like eighty thousand dollars. So that routinely can fit into the annual plan, but I agree, it should be a a threshold so that. We're not just using the stabilization fund for.
Just to supplement, just to supplement the capital plan. I I don't.
Exactly.
That anybody, maybe that was a thought, but I don't know that that was the overarching.
No, I don't think it was, but there's nothing that prohibits that.
No, no, no.
It could, I mean, not.
Again, to Marilyn's point, you can appropriate that money as you see.
Certainly not the.
Regardless of.
The elected officials and the sitting managers. But fifteen, twenty years from now, we're not all going to be here, and it could easily morph into like, well, we've got this much that we'll raise and appropriate.
Right.
And then, of course, over here now, we've got this one, so. We've got double that what we've normally used, and it it's it's lost its impact of being there as a contingency when when necessary.
And then that'll, those thresholds will just have to move with time, too, right?
Well, yes.
So. Yeah, I I can certainly point this description a certain way. I don't know that it matters in term of creating the account and putting the money into it. Our policy, so to speak, doesn't really happen at the council level anyway, so. But again, I I'd rather be sort of transparent, so we all are are speaking the same language here. And if that means waiting till January to 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 do the vote, to 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 move that and create that account. Until we're more comfortable with the explanation. Through the chair, whatever, whatever you want to do, I I, we can do, we can do whatever.
I'm I'm going with that.
Yeah, I think we have a couple of options. We could either wait until January and try to come. Which we could, since really the only motion we were undertaking would be to establish the fund, but the. The financial policy is just something that would kind of be discussed and written.
I, yeah, if legally we can take the vote tonight to allocate and set aside that one million.
Yep.
There, and then in a month or two. Wordsmith the the financial policy and then it comes back for, you know, some more discussion.
Kind of we action item the policy for for next meeting.
This is a question. Do we want to put a, a minimum?
I think that'll come through the policy.
I think we have any feedback of through Tom or anybody, like what that would look like, half a million or?
That that seems appropriate, at least for the the preliminary balance of the account.
Right.
You know, if we add to it every year and it grows through. Interest and deflation and whatnot, yeah.
Right.
That's probably the number.
That's gonna look like.
Well, I mean, just from from the standpoint of numbers, if we're gonna hang around one point two, one point five, whatever, and the capital. Six hundred thousand dollar project wipes out capital, I mean, gone. We can't do what we want to do, so that's probably the number. Five hundred, at least to start, and then we kind of see how how it plays out. I I. Again, I I don't anticipate using this account immediately.
It's like, yeah, kind of like an emergency sort of situation, like.
More of a contingency, like, oh.
The scenario I was thinking.
Gonna have to go back and look.
Yeah, well, I I guess there's a couple of schools, like, again, that that's what the stabilization fund is for to begin with. And if this is a capital one, we should really be trying to intersect those five hundred thousand dollar projects before their. Three quarter million or one point two, because the HVAC came through the roof. Now we gotta do both.
It's gonna take away from X, Y, and Z.
Correct, so. I think there's a hybrid model in there where where, yes, if a some emergency related building issue comes up, fine. But we can also be planning that money and where it intersects a capital project at the right time, then then we do that.
Perfect, okay, I'm good, that makes sense.
Any other discussion? Okay, is there a motion then?
I make a motion to approve the creation of a special purpose stabilization fund to be named the Capital Stabilization Fund. Established under Massachusetts General Laws, Section Five B, effective for the fiscal year beginning on July one, twenty twenty four. The specific purpose of funding capital purchases of the town under the Capital Improvement Plan.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So I'll entertain a motion to go back to public hearings.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Of our third and final public hearing, scheduled for six forty five, it's now six fifty eight. This is a public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments related to commercial kenneling. And a required second reading. The council members, Terri, Eric Layden, Kathy Hill, Anna Jones, myself, Connor O'Shea, Marilyn Richards, and John Torscha. I would ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The Eastland Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on December ten, twenty twenty four. At six forty five P M, in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three twenty eight North Main Street. Second reading of proposed amendments to the Town of Eastland Meadow zoning bylaws. Article eight, special permits, article eleven definitions and table three dash one. Schedule of Use Regulations as it pertains to commercial kenneling. These amendments would add animal control officer and nuisance dog to definitions. Revised the definition of commercial kennel. Also, commercial kenneling would be added to special permits. Public hearing may also be attended, may be attended via Zoom webinar, excuse me. Information relating to this bylaw is available for public inspection at the town clerk's office and on the website for the council, Jeanne Arkbogleti, Town Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Jeannie. Is there someone that would like to volunteer to give the bylaw into the record?
Oh, you want to go?
Okay.
No, you can do the whole thing. It's all or nothing, Jim.
Thanks, Anna. Subsection four fifty dash eleven point two, turn nine, animal control officer, an appointed officer. Authorized and enforced, chapter three fifteen of Eastland Meadow general bylaws, MGL, chapter one forty, subsection one thirty six A and one seventy four F. Kennel, commercial, should we read the red?
No, you don't have to anymore.
Establishment news for the for the boarding or overnight stays of cats and dogs that are not the property, the owner of the establishment. Now, which such services are rendered in exchange for consideration and in the absence of the owner of any such cat or dog. Provided, however, that the commercial kennel boarding shall not include an animal shelter or animal control facility. Nuisance dog, a dog that, one, by excessive barking or other disturbance is a source of annoyance. Sick person residing in the vicinity, or two, by excessive barking causing damage or other interference, a reasonable person would find such behavior disruptive to one's quiet and peaceful enjoyment, or three. As threaten or attack livestock, a domestic animal, or a person. But such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate reaction under all circumstances. Pet day care and grooming, the caring for maintaining, grooming, training, and safe keeping of pets of a domestic nature during normal daytime business hours. This does not include overnight kennel services. Subsection four fifty eight point one six, commercial kenneling. The following standards and conditions shall such shall apply to commercial kennels as defined in subsection four fifty. Dash eleven point two. One, the business owner shall have a kenneling license issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and shall be in good standing. Two, the business owner shall follow all relevant local state federal regulations. Three, regards to this to this section, four fifty dash eight point one six, the term animal should refer to cats and dogs exclusively. Four, the appropriate facilities, enclosures, and safety features shall include or not limited to the following. A crates, enclosures appropriately sized to allow for an animal to be comfortably stand, turn around, and lay down fully stretched. Such crates, enclosure shall have a raised floor or bedding to keep animals off the bare floor and or the bottom of a wire crate. B, floor shall be non-slip or easy to clean. C, the facility shall have adequate ventilation and. Penestration as to prevent humidity and odors from building up while allowing for air circulation. D, proper drainage to prevent still or standing water from collective, from collecting in any enclosure, floor, or play areas. E, facility shall have climate control and be habitable all year long. F, crates, enclosure shall have safety features including latches, locks, et cetera, to prevent accidental escape and injury. G, appropriate facility shall be on site for the cleaning of animals. H, the facility shall have a source of fresh drinking water. I, outdoor areas dedicated to the free roaming of animals or outdoor play areas shall be fenced in at all times. J, no features of the facility shall present any harm, both immediate and long term to animals that are boarded or kept overnight at the facility. Five, if the commercial kennel includes a boarding of dogs, the following shall apply. A, solid walls, partitions, or covers must be erected in between crates and closures in order to ensure separation, both physical and visual. Between dogs. B, staff to dog ratio should be one staff for every ten dogs. C, playgroup shall exceed no more than ten dogs and shall consist of dogs are in the same size group. D, size groups shall be categorized as follows. One, small dogs up to twenty five pounds. Two, medium dogs twenty six to sixty pounds. Three, large dogs sixty one pounds and above. E, there shall be separate play areas for each size group. F, no toys besides toy balls are allowed within the playgroups. G, no shared feeding area shall exist and dogs must eat separately in order to prevent resource guarding and potential dog fights. H, facility shall have exterior green space to allow for dog potty breaks. I, outdoor play areas shall have the following fence sites. One, at least four feet in height for playgroups consisting of small dogs. Two, at least six feet in height for playgroups consisting of medium or enlarged dogs. J, aggressive reactive and or nuisance dogs should be isolated from other dogs at all times. Six, the planning board shall include the following conditions. A, hours of operation. B, pickup and drop off time so it can be staggered. C, frequency of animal control inspections. D, total number of animals allowed at the facility. E, soundproofing of the facility. Schedule Use Regulations, one change under bylaw number four, commercial kenneling, see article eight, I, S P.
The only one thing I think on one of the pages was. Number six, there was also F overnight monitoring and overnight staffing requirements.
That came.
Yeah, that came from the.
Our meeting.
Our meeting. Okay. So at this time. Public hearing is open to the public. If anyone would like to offer any questions. Seeing no one in the audience, I'll input portion of the meeting. Any councilor have any comments, questions?
All right, the Planning Matters Subcommittee met to view this bylaw detail. As Jim just read, it includes a number of. Conditions required to establishing a kennel in Eastland Meadow. This use has not been permitted in in our town currently. We do not allow kenneling in town. We do have one kennel that is grandfathered. I can't tell you what the reason was that the town chose not to have these, except perhaps nuisance issues. That's the only thing. You know, we could think of as a committee discussing this. If this bylaw were approved by the council, it would allow a commercial kennel to exist in the industrial zone only. It also would require that the application be under special permit. Special permit gives the town. The ability to establish special conditions based on the applicant and perhaps the location. As a committee, we found very little, very little to change with respect to this proposed bylaw. The only thing that was suggested, there were a few words that were in quotes, and we felt that. That these words didn't need to be identified differently than within the text, so we took the quotes away. And as Connor mentioned, there are special conditions in the bylaw and the proposed bylaw where it says. The planning board may include the following as conditions. And that would be done through the special permit. The addition of overnight monitoring and staffing requirements. We recommend, as a committee unanimously to the council, that I'll be supported as presented.
Thank you, Marilyn. Are any comments or questions? Now I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning bylaw amendments related to commercial kenneling as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote since it's a bylaw change, Jim?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You. Okay, we can return to quarters of the day, financial matters, and we are up to number three.
Agree.
Appropriate free cash in the amount of one million dollars to the Capital Stabilization Fund. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appropriate free cash in the amount of one million dollars to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Next, we have appropriate free cash in the amount of two million five hundred twelve thousand dollars. To the General Stabilization Fund, compensated absences, and OPEV. Is there a motion?
We appropriate free cash in the amount of two million five hundred and twelve thousand to the following funds. One million eight hundred and fifty seven thousand, General Stabilization Fund. Eighty five thousand, Compensated Absences Fund. Five hundred and seventy thousand, Other Post-Employee Benefits, OPEV Fund.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. We're on to approval of minutes.
I make a motion to. Six twenty twenty four, open session minutes.
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Have no old business, so new business. We have the approval to submit the age and dementia friendly East Long Meadow goals report to A A R P. The presentation from our council and aging director.
Thank you for including us on uh, your agenda tonight. I'm glad you got a lot of um, good news to start the meeting with. I'm sure. Becky Bash from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is here with me. Um, and really, I'm just here to present the community assessment and action plan for the age and dementia friendly initiative um, in East Long Meadow. Um, it's sort of the culmination of something that started in April of twenty twenty-two with a dementia friendly initiative. Here, we kicked it off, a um, a working group and a task force, um, and then expanded that into age-friendly with a. Community compact best practice grant um, in the spring or the fall of twenty twenty-three, and that's when we were able to bring on. Valley Planning Commission to help us um, survey town residents and older. We sent out um, over a thousand surveys to find out what people's priorities were. And then held three different listening sessions, which some of you were present for here at the council on aging. Um, and so this assessment and action plan is the result of that. You know, we put a lot of work into this. Um, we're really excited about the results and I think the timing is really great. Um, with the Center of Town Steering Committee that's happening, um, the digital equity planning grant that's, that work that's occurring, the. Communication needs assessment, um, the recent um, commission for people with disabilities, ADA self-evaluation transition grant. Um, and the Affordable Housing Act stuff that's all going on. It's sort of all in sync and works all together. We want to make sure that. All of those needs assessments um, and plans going forward include people who are aging in town and want to stay in town. Um, as well as those folks who may have memory impairment and they're caregivers. So. Um, I'm asking for your approval of this um, assessment and action plan to submit to the A A R P. Becky, anything else?
Yeah, I think you covered it. It was, it was a great working group, um, you know, made up of, of representatives from several town departments as well as older adults, so. Um, really good committee, working on this and a lot of participation in the, in the survey and the public, um, the information sessions. So, um, I think we got a lot of great input for this plan and um. Hope you got a chance to read it and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Nicely done.
Like to be involved in implementing. We'll be putting together another work, so um, please consider.
Did you ask anything, Jeannie?
I just want to make sure the motion is correct, what you need to have to go forward. So the motion on the table was to approve the submittal of the age and dementia friendly East Long Meadow goals report to the A A R P. Is that sufficient?
That sounds right. Becky, does that sound right to you from your experience?
Yeah, and I, I think you already submitted the dementia plan to M, MCOA, right?
That went to MCOA, yeah.
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, the report was uh, very detailed. There was a lot of information in there, so thank you to everyone who put that together.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve this middle, the age and dementia friendly East Long Meadow goals report to the A A R P.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are action items for our next meeting. I have uh, from tonight that will. Financial policy for the capital stabilization fund language. Also, just your calendar. Next meeting, so our next meeting would be January fourteenth. Um, at that time, we'll probably have a quarterly, quarterly financial report. We will have a first public hearing for the A D U. Even though we may not approve it at that meeting, but they'll at least start the timeline for us so that we can hopefully get that done before the state deadline. Encroaches upon us and um, hopefully we'll also have a, we start the discussion on. Cool funding and the overall upcoming budget process.
Yes.
Fourteenth will be the joint.
Yes, that'll hopefully be the plan. Does anyone have any other action items? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? Favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, we're adjourned at seven fifteen. Thank you all.
Thank you.